How are you?
Good.
Yes. Too slow.
Dang. You were recorded everything.
It looks like we are now YouTube Live.
Really?
All right, welcome to our, it is our work session or work meeting for the city council. It is Tuesday, October 6th, 2020. It's a little past 5:30, but we'll call it 5:30. We'd like to begin with a word of prayer. Is there anyone that'd like to offer the prayer tonight?
I will.
Thank you.
Father in heaven, we are thankful to be able to meet and discuss items concerning our city this evening and our residents. We ask a blessing on this food that it may strengthen and nourish our bodies and our minds. Please help us to think clearly and make good decisions. And keep what's best in Santaquin and for our residents in mind. We pray for those who are suffering and fighting fires and suffering from other natural disasters. We pray for those who are suffering with COVID-19, that they may be blessed with health and strength. And we pray that we will use wisdom and good judgment in making decisions and open our hearts and minds to learning from one another this evening. And we say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Montoya. We'd like to welcome those that are live on YouTube. So as well as those that are welcome to come here, this open public meeting. We'd like to begin tonight with, we have a roll call. It's, we're all here. And we need, let's have a pledge of allegiance tonight. Anyone who'd like to lead us in that?
I'll do it. Stand and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Miller. All right, our discussion items tonight is number one, presentation, Utah Valley Visioning Presentation. Cameron, are you there?
I am here, Mayor.
All right, good to see you.
Good to be seen. Not ready to be viewed yet, you know? Quite bad.
So just, just so you know, and for the public knowledge too, we, we are in the middle of a wiring project to get this room up and going with new technology. We didn't quite finish that project today, and so we have a little bit of static and we're using the old system, but the, the microphones from the new system and hopefully we make it through this evening without too much difficulty. But when you are speaking, there's a little bit of a static, just so you know, and it's nothing we can fix, so.
Thank you for that. And Mayor, thank you for your, for your greeting. It's great to see you from afar and gratefully, at least through technology. I'm joined today with Ari Bruni, who is the CEO of Envision Utah and Curtis Blair, who's our newly selected and appointed president and CEO of Utah Valley Chamber of Commerce. And we're glad to have him here. I am a former chair of the Utah Valley Chamber of Commerce and current chair of the Valley Visioning Committee for the chamber. And in that capacity, we come before you, I come before you to introduce Ari, who has some data and information to share with you. And I'll give you just a brief recap and understanding of where we've been on Valley, the Valley Visioning effort. Hopefully this is not a new concept or new, new initiative to you because over the last year plus, we have been working towards collating, collating and bringing together input and feedback from citizens from the south and north, east, west, and everywhere in between. And also the city's leaders, municipal and county leaders and state legislators, their feedback on how we grow, to use the tagline of Envision Utah, how we grow does matter. And that's one reason why we, as a chamber, in partnership with all the local chambers from, from across the county have, and we formally established an association, Utah County Chambers, have locked our arms in this effort, which is an effort to, again, to collaborate the planning process, not to strip any one community from any, its distinctiveness, but rather to celebrate it and bring greater light to it. But also know how one community, Santaquin, impacts another. Payson, for example, or even Lehigh, what's going on because of the various distinctive natures of each region of the, of the county. So Valley Vision really started in, in 2018 in earnest. And through this effort of listening to civic leaders, community members, and our business community and their leadership, we've identified six priorities that we have now have vision statements and we've gone out and tested. We've surveyed and hosted town hall meetings from the north and south, all over the county that have helped fine tune and shape these six priorities, which are housing, transportation, air quality, agricultural and open space, water quality and quantity, and workforce and education and that alignment. Those are the six areas and Ari will share with you some of the feedback we received from over, I guess it was 15,000, I said 11,000. New number is 15,000 participants who've, who've engaged in this planning process. Again, what we try to do with this is understand the unique nature of each community, help them plan one another because what one does does impact the other. But it also informs, if you will, a public agenda for the, for the chamber. And, and it's all the, all the chambers actually throughout the valley. So that when we engage our officials at the local level or at the state level, we have a, a if you will, an agenda that is well informed, publicly vetted. And when we speak, we know we're speaking behalf of and in fair representation of the citizens of our community. Again, we welcome your feedback. What we're doing today is reporting back from these town hall meetings and giving you a draft. We did not want you to be caught off guard when we release them publicly next month. And the event Ari can tell you a little bit more about that. But when we release it, we wanted you to have your chance to, to shape it and say, hey, this would really make it a valuable tool for us to use. If you did this or hey, please refer to our neck of the woods is in this manner. We're open to your feedback because we want you to use this for the tool it's intended to, to be again, in collaboration with one community to another. So without further ado, I'll turn the time over to Ari to help us in reporting this data, which is important to understand, by the way, because the economic and political epicenter of the state is shifting south. It's coming to Utah County as we continue to grow. Rose, nothing new to us. But how we grow again matters. And on that note, Ari, take it away.
Thanks, Cameron. I've got a daughter practicing the piano right now, so I may have a little background music to my as I talk, so. Um, so Valley Visioning, Cameron did a great introduction. The, the goal here is to look forward and think about the growth that's coming to Utah County. So Utah County is projected to double in population by 2050. So you're looking at in 2050, a population that's similar to what Salt Lake County is today. And the goal is to do it better. And then adding, adding a million people by 2065. And we, we undertook a three-phase process. So the first phase back in 2018 was to listen to the public, understand what their priorities were, what their ideas were, and prioritize different issues and topics. So we did a, we did a preliminary survey then with almost 3,000 people took part and we did 12 workshops, including, I think we were in Payson at the Petite Museum there. And just one of the findings from the survey, we asked people what, what issues were most important to them as they thought about growth? And, and the six topics that Cameron mentioned came out of this survey. So at the top, water and transportation, air pollution, education, jobs, housing, agriculture, open space. Those are the kinds of things that people told us they were worried about and that we needed to address. And so based on that, we put together priority working groups around each topic and asked them to help us think through what the options were for tackling those different topics. We also went throughout the county in different workshops. We put people around tables and asked them to tell us how they would grow. Where would you put different types of development? Where would you put single family neighborhoods? Where would you put apartments? Where would you put roads? Where would you put transit and so on? We got 70 some odd maps out of that and we put it all into GIS, analyzed the results. And based on that, we, we put together some different options for how the county could grow. And that was what the focus of phase two was, those different options. So we did scenarios for the year 2050. There are different ways the county could look in 2050 with 1.2 million people in it. And think of these as kind of crash test dummies. You know, you get to try out virtually what different options and see what you like the best. So we put those scenarios together. We worked with Mountainland Association of Governments and Central Utah Water Conservancy District to model those, see what transportation looked like, how much water they used and so on. 11,000 people went online and took a survey to tell us what they liked about different scenarios. And just real, real quickly, just to give you kind of an overview of the, the big idea in each of the scenarios. Scenario A was thinking, looking back 20 years and saying, this is how we've grown. Let's project that forward to 2050. Let's just keep growing the same way and see what that looks like. Scenario B, a little more kind of the Wasatch Choice pattern of growth with mixed-use centers near high-capacity transportation. Scenario C, we saw a lot of maps where people said, let's grow west towards Eagle Mountain, a lot of available land there. So that scenario concentrates the growth there. We said, if we're going to do that, we better do one growing south towards Santaquin. Southern growth, a lot of available land there too. And then we, scenario E, kind of the, let's grow up rather than out. Let's infill our existing urban areas and, and not grow out so much. So we took those to the public. We had some visualizations. If you look at these maps, the, kind of the dark orange on the right side of the slide, the dark orange is the new development and then the, the paler color is existing development today. So the new development by 2050 is what you're looking at. So this is scenario A. If we take what we did the last 20 years and project it forward, that's kind of what it looks like. Scenario B, a little more compact, more growth in those mixed-use centers, still a lot of single-family neighborhoods though. And then scenario C, we're growing westward rather than south. So a lot of growth out there by Eagle Mountain. Scenario D, this, this might terrify you. We're growing south towards Payson, Santaquin and Benjamin, so on. And then scenario E, most compact of all the scenarios, we're infilling, we're, we're becoming more urban essentially. So we took these to the public. They voted on them. The, the blue bars here are the 11,000 people who went online and weighed in. And we did a random sample survey, paid, paid a company to do the random sample survey just to make sure we didn't get 11,000 weirdos who didn't represent the county. And, and the good news is if they were weirdos, the entire county appears to be full of weirdos. So you can see the red and the blue are pretty, pretty much the same. There are a few topics where they differed a little more than this, but for the most part, pretty much the same. And you can see kind of the takeaway, that scenario B with the, the mixed-use centers, kind of like Wasatch Choice, got the most support. People, people seem to like growing west, including when we sliced it by zip code, people who lived out by Eagle Mountain were, were pretty okay with, with growth in that direction. And then the next highest was that urban infill scenario. So not a lot of people said, grow south towards Santaquin. You might take some comfort in that. And not a lot of people said, let's keep doing it how we've been doing it. I don't think that's any indictment of the way we've been doing it. It's just recognition that there's a lot of growth coming and maybe we need to do something slightly different. So we took all our, you know, we have a lot more survey results than that. I'm not going to show you all of it, but we took it all back to our priority working groups to help us put together a vision for the future. And at a really high level, this is what Utah County residents said they want. They want convenient transportation choices, whether they're driving, whether they're biking, whether they're riding a train. They want housing options that meet the market. They want open space and recreation opportunities. They want to support local agriculture. They don't want to see agriculture go away. They want to manage the water wisely. They recognize that supporting 1.2 million people, we're going to have to be pretty wise in how we use water. And they want a, a well-educated population and then they want clean air. So that, that's the vision for what we're trying to accomplish. We, we have kind of goal statements on each of these topics as well as detailed strategies. We're happy to share those with you if you want to look through them and give us feedback. This is actually kind of hot off the presses, but we've tried to boil down the strategies for how we're going to get there into these five things. A network of walkable mixed-use centers. So coordinating your transportation investments with where you're putting jobs, housing and so forth. Variety of market-based neighborhood and housing types. So people at different life stages, incomes, preferences can all find what they want and can afford. And then invest in well-maintained highway transit and active transportation infrastructure, maintain a world-class education system, and then use landscaping vehicles, infrastructure and buildings and so on, that efficiently use resources and minimize pollution. So those are, this, this is our, our draft attempt to boil down all of the different strategies that came out of this into, into five big picture strategies. And then we've also got a draft centers map, since those mixed-use centers seem to get a lot of traction with people. This is kind of a conceptual map of where they might go, coordinated with the MAGA Regional Transportation Plan. And I believe we're showing, it's like we're showing a neighborhood center along the Santaquin Main Street. Hopefully, hopefully that works for you. If not, we're happy to hear feedback on that. So basically that's where we're headed. We're going to release this vision November, what is it, Cameron, 17? Sometime in November, I think it's November 17th. We're going to have an online event. We'll have, yeah, November 17th. We'll, we'll have the governor and others speaking. So stay tuned for that. We wanted to make sure you had a little preview of what we're up to and a chance to give some feedback. So.
It's November.
Stop and let you ask questions or let Cameron add to it.
November 17th at 2:00 PM, it'll be an online experience so that we welcome your participation then. I would say that the various scenarios, the reality is what will happen will be a blending of them. But hopefully from these scenarios, it focuses and gives you data to make informed decisions on how and what your priorities are. So as Ari just said, if the, at that end, you know, that neighborhood center along the main street area of Santaquin is not with what your vision is, we need that feedback so that again, we can represent what you're looking for and trying to do as the city leaders. So we're trying to give you a tool that will help you be successful in your stewardship. And I, with that, I will ask if there are any questions. We appreciate your time very much.
Any questions? Is exit 242 in this envisioning besides Main Street?
I'm not sure the exit 242 specifically, but the one, one aspect that this Santaquin City has been working very hard to plan for its future is a parallel freeway on the west side of Utah Lakes, splitting off in Santaquin and shooting up Redwood Road connecting to Mountain View Corridor and eventually airport and, and inland port if that goes forward. And, and so while, while your plan doesn't recognize it, we, we definitely recognize the, the need for corridor preservation and it's something that we're working on right now for that redundant traffic corridor as well as widening our main street in the interim.
Ben, who have you been partnering on, on that corridor?
I'm sorry?
Who have you been partnering with on that, the development of that corridor? Utah County, other municipalities?
So we, we've had it go on and off, the long-term visiting plan for MAG, UDOT, SITLA, because it would go through SITLA property. And then just working on corridor preservation in general. The other aspect is that Santaquin envisions that the terminus of frontrunner would, would end in Santaquin at some day in the future. And we have property already available, ready to go for that. And there's only one, one mile of, of rail connectivity that is not already in existence. So we've been, I guess, working fairly hard to, to ensure that our main street is widened, that, that corridor is preserved for the, for the frontrunner and for the western freeway as well as looking at potential connectivity to a future interchange in between Santaquin and Payson that would be able to route traffic towards Genoa and Goshen area as well. So.
That's important information for us to make sure that we point to in the report. So thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So you'll know that what we've had on the map is just what's in the R T P. So we, we should continue to have this conversation with MAG as well. So.
Yep, that'd be great. Looks great.
Any other comments, Council?
Why we're having this meeting. So thank you and thank you for your forward thinking.
Can I make a comment? With some of these things that we envision as a councilman, some of the things that I worry about when I see that is the, the conflict between some of them, like a million more people and clean air, a million more people and plenty of water. Those things seem to be in conflict right now. And I know we're always working to try to make our air cleaner, but adding a million people and the, whatever transportation comes is I know you're, you're looking at that and it's more of just a comment of what scares me with that many more people in our valley. And I don't know if there's a solution today, but we got to keep that on the forefront of our minds as we, as we grow.
Is that Councilman Hathaway?
No, Meekum.
I'm trying to, there we go, Meekum. Sorry. You're very, very small on my screens.
Because I'm not in person.
Your, your point is
The new cameras next time.
Your point is so well taken. That is the very issue at the heart. So when we go and speak with our state legislators, for example, we can say this ducks the position between air quality and the number of people or, or, or water and the growth that we have to address it now so that we can manage it appropriately. So you're right on, you're right on target. This is the very issue that we're trying to get to and come together on how we manage that future.
Thank you. I'll add as, you know, as we model these different scenarios, it's, it's doable. And we can add a million people and, and still have clean air and still have enough water. But it, but it takes effort and work.
So one, one thing that the mayor brought up was our exit 242, our southern exit. And, and just so you're aware, it's the first exit as you come into Utah County. And exit 242 is, is something that we're planning for an agritourism destination. We're working with USU right now in their landscape architect department, coming in and doing a charrette with their entire department with all students at all levels to plan for the high-tech agricultural industries that we have here in Santaquin. From our second largest tart cherry producer to, to Olson's Greenhouse that, that provides annuals and perennials to the entire Intermountain West, to Howling's Tomatoes and Mona and Young Living Farms. We're, we are kind of a little bit of a mecca of high-tech agriculture. And, and so having USU come in and, and plan for the, the growth wave that's eventually going to hit so that it's, it's growing in such a manner that it supports agriculture and clean air is something that we also are, are highly valuing in. It seems to be very well aligned with your goals and aspirations.
That sounds wonderful.
It does. Bopped off by Family Tree Restaurant Antler Size Dome.
Over by the red bar, kind of get your ice cream and corn mace.
That's exactly right.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Um, I attended one of your workshops last week for the virtual league conference. This is Councilmember Montoya. And I really appreciated during the discussion of the four different scenarios, the comment that was made, and I apologize, I don't remember which person made it or who made it, but I really appreciated the comment that was made that when those who were participating in the exercises, when it was pointed out to them that Payson and Santaquin have a lot of agricultural land and that's why there's a lot of open land in this part of the valley. That if, if a plan were to be chosen that supported more growth in this area versus the west in Eagle Mountain, that, that agricultural land would be lost. And I think it's very telling and and I feel supported by those all over the valley who, who participated in the exercises and took the survey and kept that in mind to say, we don't want to lose that ag land. Whether we live in Santaquin or not, the people in Utah Valley value our ag land and they don't want to lose it. And so I really appreciate that knowledge and I hope that our residents will take some comfort in that to know that others in the valley support our efforts to, to try to keep as much ag land as possible while, while respecting land development rights from property owners.
Thank you.
Councilman Montoya, you're right. That's why agriculture and open space is a priority.
And we, we actually, we did, we had people around maps putting growth down and a lot of people circled that area around Benjamin and said, leave it alone. Of course, that's also where the water is because the ag's there. So it does make it harder to find enough water, but.
Well, you also point out an interesting juxtaposition between the landowner who currently farms that land and the next generation, their issue or interest in pursuing that or not. So it is a weight he has.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? I think no. Thanks, Cameron. Thanks, Ari.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And Ben, for your
You're welcome.
work in the council. Thank you for your time and, and the door is always open. So this is not a one and done, an ongoing process that will help us over the years. We'll keep in touch.
Great.
Okay, thanks.
Everybody.
Thank you. Thanks, Ari. See you, Chris.
Okay. Any off Zoom comments? All right, we'll move on to number two, Discussion CARES Act Funding.
Okay, Aaron Council, we just wanted to give you an update. We can't give you a full update on the stimulus program that we had locally until our next meeting because coupons can still be turned in up till tomorrow. But we've had a great response from that, very positive response from the public and from the business community. And so we're, we're we're glad that the council chose to have that go forward and, and we think that it's been a true benefit. With that said, we've also received a ruling of the US Department of Treasury made a ruling that the use of frontline public safety employee wages is COVID-related. And so basically the full use of the funding coming from the county can now be allocated to Santaquin City and there's no fear that some of that money may go back. It, it is going to be used. It'll be used for those items that you've already pre-approved and, and the remainder can be used to supplement our, our public safety funds, which then does free up general fund dollars, if you will. Because our public safety expenditures can take place from March until June in one fiscal year and from July 1st until November 1st in the second fiscal year. It'll split the 878 into two different pots of, of money. And that means that neither pot of money goes over $750,000. And that is a triggering number because if you go over $750,000 in federal funds in any given year, you have to have what's called a single audit and it's a much more extensive audit. And that is, is now been alleviated. In fact, when we In fact, when we turn our receipts into the county, pretty much we're going to have in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one receipt for public safety expenditures. The next year we'll have public safety expenditures. And if there's anything left over, it'll be business stimulus. Everything else, just so that the paperwork is as clean and tight as possible, and we comply with, fully with, with any rulings and directives from the Treasury Department. Utah County has now accepted that, so there won't be any contention or fight. And I think partly it's because it not only benefits every municipality within the county, but it also benefits the county because they can utilize those funds for public safety for their own sheriff's department, jail, and public health department expenditures. But with that said, all of our directors are, are basically tying up loose ends with all of their projects that you've already pre-approved. And the only, we basically had a meeting this past week to see if there was anything new that we should add, any other requests that we should bring forward to you. And the only thing that really came is something that's come from the public that we wanted to bring, run past you. And that is, does Santaquin City want to engage in doing a feasibility study with the objective of trying to bring fiber optic cable, cables into our community and bringing fiber to the home? It would be a very expensive project, but we don't really know how expensive and how extensive until we do a feasibility study. And in utilizing CARES Act dollars for that purpose, we truly bring benefit to those who are working from home and those students who are, who are educated from home. And is that something that you would like us to get an estimate and bring back to you in a future funding allocation?
I would. I think so. I'd be interested in saying that.
And studies generally are fairly expensive. I can imagine that a study of this nature is probably in the fifty thousand dollar range. But it's something that if we're going to be taking on new, larger projects like we have in the past, we really ought to mature our processes and have solid feasibility studies. That is something that former council member Broadhead has highly recommended as he's brought from his experience from Spanish Fork and, and how they've matured is doing those feasibility studies. So we know exactly what we're getting into, what the cost might be, how we might be able to fund those, what grants might be available. And, and then that helps you in decision-making in the future. So with that said, we'll bring that. Is there any other expenditures that you would have us look into that we haven't already covered? If not, what we're envisioning is that any leftover funding that hasn't been already allocated would potentially be directed into the new city office building to have redundant emergency operations center and ensuring that we have the technology necessary to, to handle any kind of issues in the future, any kind of emergencies. And, and so as we continue our efforts in, in that regard, utilize, we would have those funds that you could tap into for that purpose to enhance that building overall for the future of our community.
I like it.
Okay. That's all I have on that subject.
One more thing on that. Our conference call yesterday at the county and the health department, MAG let us know that they have six million more dollars available for business relief. It needs an application. In fact, they're going back and those they denied on the first or second round. They're approving them now just to be able to get the money out. And then whatever's left over, the suggestion even came up that whatever's left over could be distributed between the cities again. So we may even get more as a city. So if you know anybody that has a business, small business that was affected by COVID, get them to, and get online and look up MAG, Mountain Land Association of Governments. And it'll take you right to the, the form, phone number. The, the ladies there are incredible to help you and get it filled out.
We did take that advertisement and put it on our Santaquin Facebook page. So anyone could click right from our link right to that.
The deadline is October nineteenth.
Okay.
So, yeah. Yes, Jason.
I did send you an email with, with an attachment to that. I, I think I put a stack over there. Oh, right there. If you want to take some of those to small businesses and give them that, that, that's the information you're talking about.
Perfect. That's all I have. What you got?
On the next item?
You got the next item, like training, new agenda management software and packet access.
So Aaron's going to lead us through this. Before we, we turn it over to him, I just want to reiterate to the, to you and to the public that we do have new camera systems. They literally were wearing right to the last minute. They, they aren't operational yet, but they're, they will be soon. And so Aaron's been leading that effort and appreciate his work on that. And, and leading the effort on this new agenda management software, you know, changes, changes change. And, and, and I appreciate the young to help the old, like me, trying to find new and better ways to do things. So I appreciate Aaron's effort on this. And I will share this screen and turn it over to him. Where's my? Sorry, you couldn't see around you.
Oh, yeah. So there's a lot of change going on and a lot of bumps, but we're learning. So it's going well.
It's all good.
There's three cameras. So you notice it'll project a hologram like Star Wars. Just kidding. That'd be awesome, though. Okay, I'm just trying to log in here.
If I may say so, it is a little unnerving to have the black camera moving by itself to focus on different. That's a little, I don't know, different, but we'll get used to it.
There's two camera systems. The white is the primary one that we'll use most of the time. And you'll see that it can focus on the person standing talking. This one will focus on any of the council. And, and that one will focus on staff and it'll have presets. So whoever's watching the meeting can hit whoever's talking and we'll zoom on those.
Oh, great.
The black one is a redundant one that does the entire room at all times. So.
Okay.
To the whole room or to the.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm sorry about that. I just had to switch myself over to be a legislator. So you guys could see what you would look at. You won't have this security tab. This is just so I can turn myself back to a city recorder. Otherwise I'd be locked. But you will notice this is going to be, um, this is what you're probably going to see when you first log in. You're going to see an item list. This is the first tab. So this item list is just for upcoming agenda items that are not yet assigned. So it's kind of handy. You can click on it, see how it's progressing. It'll bring up what's called an item detail portal. And this is simply so you can just kind of see any details, who's it's assigned to attachments, that there's attachments. So it's kind of, you can monitor their, you can see the process as it goes along. This is before it gets assigned to a meeting. Whenever an agenda item gets assigned to a meeting, this is going to be your go-to. And this is what I envision you guys will be using to access your packet and agendas. So you would click here to meeting list. And I gave you guys access to all the meetings, just in case you are interested in looking at those. But I would recommend there's a filter right here and you can just go ahead and hit city council, regular meeting, city council work session. You can hit search. And then that will just filter out all the other meetings. But I just thought maybe you're interested in seeing historic preservation or recreation, because I know you guys have different assignments. So once you're at this screen, you'll, it's, it's pretty simple. You can just go down, see what kind of meeting it is. It has the date right here. You'll see these are future meetings. They have nothing attached to them. They're not active. They're not live. And then you'll see the meetings that we're in right now. You'll see they have, they're kind of lit up here, meaning here's the agenda. You can download in different formats. You can download it in a PDF right here with the little Adobe signature. You can download it into Word. And then if you click on that meeting, you can actually have a little bit more access to seeing the agenda and the packets. You have two different options for the packets. You have a, you can click on the HTM, on the PDF version, and it will download. This is a very large document, so it might take a second. Because it opened up a different tab. Okay, for the people watching out there, that's opening up a giant PDF document. And the nice thing about this, this system is it's auto hyperlinks all of the agenda items to the agenda. So when you click on a certain agenda item, it will take you to that portion of the packet. Councilmember Montoya made comments that there is not a button to head back to the agenda quite so easily. So you would have to scroll all the way back up. That is something I'm commenting to MuniCode that I would like to see maybe just a button on, at the end of each agenda item. So you could go back to the agenda. Otherwise you have to scroll all the way up. While we're waiting for this to load, I'm going to go ahead and show you what I think would be the preferred method. This is my preferred method of accessing a packet. It's the HTML. So with the help of our MuniCode trainer, I installed some HTML code that would just mimic exactly what the agenda is going to look like right here. And as you scroll down, you'll see it's a normal agenda. And then it has the agenda packet items attached right below each of the items that they're related to. And as you click on them, it will open up a preview pane and another tab. So this is for use in browser, whatever browser of your choice. But our trainer said it's recommended that Google Chrome is used. I don't know if you guys have a preference of browsers, but I recommend Google Chrome. So you notice you can look at it right here. It's a lot easier than what I've been talking about. Let's go check out. Sorry. I'm jumping back and forth a lot. So this is what the PDF looks like. Sorry for the folks at home that can't see this. But as you go down, you'll notice that there's links on the numbers and you can click on those links and it'll take you to that portion of the PDF. Ratification of the road development warranty work. No idea what that means. Let's look what Norm wrote about it. And then so we read the memo. And then, so that takes you right back. Unfortunately, like I said, you have to scroll all the way back up. There is this nice feature where you know at least what item you're looking at, because on the bottom corner, it's always going to say the item number. But like I said, I really do. That's true. I can't see the bar.
Over to the little banner.
Because it's.
That's in the top right corner. And the down arrow, click on the, that. Okay, so you can't click on each individual item, but you can just click on top. And then it will take you back to the top of the document. But it's picky. You have to wait until, yeah, right there.
That's a great, that's great.
And then it will just take you back up to the top and then you can click on another hyperlink number. So that's one way. But your, your way of the HTML seems simpler to go item by item.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend this personally. If you're on a computer, if you're on a tablet, then I guess I would recommend go ahead and using the, the packets, the Adobe packets. Do you guys have any questions? I feel like it went kind of fast. Do you know, I, I sent your logins and your passwords to you just before the meeting and some of you during the meeting. So if you have any trouble logging in, if you, you have any questions, that's, that's the basic field MuniCode. You have the meetings list. You have that, which gives you the power to look at any meeting that's published or that has been created. And then you have the item list, which is just items for city council, just council. So no other board, just council that have not yet been assigned, that you can just kind of take a look at. And that's really the two tabs you'll really have. This, this tab you won't have, like I said, this is just so I can turn myself back into a city recorder. And then the recent items tab I added, it's kind of handy. If you're jumping back and forth between a lot of different things, you can go to recent items and you'll click and it'll give you, it'll bring up the most recent thing you were just on. This is actually, I, I use this a lot when I'm switching back and forth between meetings, because it's easy to go back. Oh, I was on the work session. Now I want to go back to city council meeting. So you can go back and forth. I would add that this view right here, where you can actually see the meeting, all the options for the agenda and packet is also on our website. So I realized that today. But, um, so this is sort of redundant. If you, you can either log in, or if it's easier, just go to our website, go to our meetings and agenda. And this pops up right there, just like the public. But the one advantage is you can see an item list of things that are coming up if you have questions or ideas. Are there any questions you guys have for me really quick?
I have a question.
Sign off. Yes.
Does this mean that we are doing away with Dropbox? At least for our purposes.
I think eventually, this list right here, they showing.
Is the upcoming?
Is the upcoming list. It's probably not quite as user-friendly as seeing what meetings. So I'd like to at least maintain that. Maybe not the individual boxes, but there's times when you might want to drop something in like you just did a few minutes ago that we're going to go over on the next agenda item for us to have a folder. So we'll, we'll kind of play it by ear and do some things redundantly until the new normal is accepted and embraced, because we don't want to jar you too much. And so I would highly recommend that as you start to get into this, that when you're ready to do it your first time, you set up an appointment and grab Aaron and sit him next to you. And then you do it. And then when you need his help, he's right there to help you and whatnot. And then you start getting used to the, forming new habits.
Absolutely. I've been training all across the city. I feel very comfortable. So if you have any questions, please reach out. Dave's already sent me an appointment request right now. Okay. And then there is more functionality. I, I realized, Ben, you just said maybe if they wanted to add certain items, kind of like you mentioned, I can add that functionality if they have certain things they want to bring.
I think that probably is still appropriate to come through the mayor and then we'll.
Okay, perfect. All right. Well, that's all I have for you. Thanks so much, guys.
Thank you.
All right. This is the first of three parts to our, our website update. This one is for the agenda. The second one is, these microphones are really sensitive. So I think, so that you're probably being picked up by YouTube.
Lynn's saying that his little icons on his, on his iPad are not working.
Okay.
For him to access the agendas and stuff. And I was saying that I used my laptop this afternoon at home before I came. And they worked fine for me. But on his iPad, it might be different. So you may, you may need to set up an appointment with Aaron.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's great.
Yeah, I don't want to. I don't want to bore the public with troubleshooting over a microphone, but I can definitely help you out. Maybe just right after this is done, I can, I can check that out.
Oh, it'll be a long meeting. So the other two parts are going to be the, our code going from sterling codifiers to MuniCode, which is better access. And then overall, our website transformation. So just see those in the, the days ahead. Lots going on.
And it will all be integrated. So it should be fairly sleek.
Cool.
Right now, Muni, this is the only portion of MuniCode that is active, is this meeting management. So I'll update you as that goes along.
Well, I for one appreciate your parents, your, your patience. For those of us who could be your parents. That's what I was trying to say. Yes. Yeah, say hi for me.
Thank you, Aaron. Item number four, training, Utah City and Lake Towns Conference Report by Councilmember Montoya.
Okay.
Which one would you like first, the spring or the?
Did you get both of them?
It looks like it.
I figured it out. Um, so probably the economic development one, the innovation hub. So hopefully. Oh, I have to, I have to enter my Apple ID.
Or I do, and I don't recall.
You don't know Betsy's?
No, it'd be mine, I think, but I don't. I can guess it, but I don't know.
You could click forget.
Maybe it has it.
Maybe it memorized it. Well.
No, no, it's not.
Is this showing up on the public screen?
No, not yet, because I stopped.
You're going to need to change all your passwords after the meeting.
No. Okay, so.
No.
Now we go.
Okay, it's all right. I will just share where I went and what I learned. So a couple of weeks ago at, was it just, was it last week that was the conference? Or the week before? Anyway, the, the weeks all blend together for me. But the league. But the league annual conference one virtual, they did offer some mobile tours at different locations around the state. So I signed up for two of those, one in Vernal, one in Spring City. So the, the Vernal tour was focused on economic development and an innovation hub coworking center. So I talked with you a little bit about this, Nick. And Vernal has taken what used to be their old police station, totally got it, rewired it, so it has good internet and updated everything and then and knocked down some walls, made windows bigger. It looks modern. There's lots of natural light. And what they're doing with that is they're using some grant money to create an innovation hub for entrepreneurs within their community. So what they're trying to reach those who are running small businesses out of their truck, out of their garage, out of their basement. And they don't have the capital to move out of those locations and pay eight or $1,200 a month to lease an office. But the city is being very proactive in showing support for those businesses and helping them to grow and expand and build their business. So within this innovation hub, there are going to be five private offices that which a business person like an accountant or an attorney or whomever could rent for a very, very low fee. Vernal's doing that for, I think, $200 a month for a private office. If someone doesn't need a private office, but they just, they just need or want a desk, they could rent a private desk space for $50 a month. If they only need a space occasionally, they can pay a drop in fee. I think they said it was going to be about $5 a day. They have two conference rooms that can be rented or used by those who already rent a space in the building. They are going to bring in professionals to do training on business operations like a tax accountant, a banker, so that those who are running those small businesses can learn what they need to open a business bank account. They have to register with the state of Utah and the the paperwork is lengthy and there are a lot of questions on there that I, as an educator, kind of had to guess to answer and then double check with my accountant later. And in order to open my business bank account and get the name of my business registered with the state. So they're going to be helping people walk through these steps and learn all these processes to build their business, make them more legit and support local businesses in their community for economic development. In the front part, the street side of the building, they're also going to have kind of a mini art gallery. And in order to support local artists and artisans, they will be able to rent a part of a wall or a shelf or something like that, a cabinet to display their artwork and have that for sale. And since it's street side on Highway 40, then that will capture people's attention to go in and see the artwork from local artists. So they're, they are also hoping for collaboration for coworking. So if there's somebody who is just barely opening their business and they go in and rent a desk, they can say, hey, you know, I'm trying to figure out how to market my business. Which platforms are you using? What have you found successful? And these entrepreneurs can share ideas with one another and support one another for economic development throughout the whole city. So I loved that idea. I really think that 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 would do well here. And so I would, I would like to look into that if others are in support of that. And it would, it would have to start out small and then we would just have to see how it goes and then and then work up. But I know that there are grants from GoEd and and other places that that offer economic development grants. So then I drove down to Spring City and Mayor DeGray took us on a walking tour, just a few of us on a walking tour around Spring City to see some of their historic and restored homes like Orson Hyde and and other prominent people. And what Spring City has done is really tried to help and build their, what they're calling their historic arts culture. So they have several artisans throughout the city. They have painters, pottery, hand carved and handmade wood furniture, all kinds of jewelry making, all different kinds of artisans. And once a year, they host a plein air art festival and draw hundreds and hundreds, even thousands of people there who come and buy artwork. They take the walking tour. Spring City has established a walking tour and and in their city hall, which is an old school like, like our museum, they have, they have renovated that. They said it was a process of over 40 years. And they established their, remind me, five, 503, 501?
501 C3.
501 C3. They established that decades ago. And that group of individuals took the challenge to to raise funds, apply for grants, to restore their old school building. And it is absolutely stunning inside. It is gorgeous. The bathrooms have been updated. The staircase is beautiful. That's what they use for their city hall. They have a DUP room in there. And it, it's just absolutely beautiful, but it took a long, long time, a lot of investment. It took a group of people who were champions for that cause to do a grassroots effort and apply for grants in order to get the funding a little bit at a time to restore that building. And they, on the wall in that building, one of the pictures that I took is that they have a Spring City walking tour of their downtown. And there's a map of it, a picture map. And you, you just walk downtown. And it reminded me a lot of Santaquin, actually, because there are very few curb gutter sidewalk streets. And several older homes, lots of trees in their downtown, very small local businesses. And they have on this map, different places and businesses that you can visit, the, the art gallery, the pottery shop, this restaurant to get a burger, things like that on this walking tour that they have established, which is something that we've discussed on the Fine Arts Committee is establishing a Santaquin downtown walking tour, which I think is a great idea. So those were some of the things that I learned and wanted to bring back and share, because I think we can learn from other communities what they are doing well, what's working for them in some of the areas that we want to develop in our city, like arts and economic development. And one of the other things that they are doing is they're taking an old reservoir and they, from NCRS, is that what it's called, Norm? NCRS or NRCS? NRCS. They got $21 million from NRCS to do a project with their old reservoir and improve it and make it like what we've talked about with our reservoir number two. And so they're gonna, they're gonna add recreation there. They're gonna improve it and have maybe campsites and restrooms and paddle boarding and and things like that available. And they got a lot of money to go toward that project as a watershed project. So I thought that was really good information, too, that as we move forward with reservoir number two, we can look into the grant funding that can help pay for that as well. So that's what I learned and that's my report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for her report or trip?
It's beautiful driving weather.
Thank you for doing it.
But it was still smoky out there, too.
Yeah. Okay, we'll adjourn this meeting. So there's nothing else. We'll re-adjourn our regular council meeting at seven o'clock.
Very good.